I made it.
You did make it so fine.
Will you pour that drink?
It's Tuesday, May 1st, 2018, please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Minutes of reports received in five. Commissioner Committee liaison reports upcoming meetings and events.
I don't know, not ready yet.
Do you want me to go first?
Oh, I think I got it now. If you were ready, we could have pipped through there. Forgot that tag. Thursday's National Day of Prayer Breakfast. Did y'all get an invite to anything for that?
We got communities too that day. Maybe you need the prayer more.
I pray all the time, Sam. I get a lot of during the year season in the stand. I guess that's Thursday. We should have some kind of invite for some of that. Cole County Extension is Thursday evening. East Side Business Association is Friday morning. There's the FFA Dinner Wednesday or Saturday night. Nobody's doing anything beyond Orville. That's about it.
There's a West Side Business Association meeting on Wednesday morning at 7:30. And then a salute to America meeting Wednesday at 11:30. That's it.
We got communities meeting at 7:00 AM. Thursday, Friday, I'm meeting with Lieutenant Governor Carson. Saturday, I'm on KWS on the National Guard. We got the Shelby Fest downtown Saturday too, which is, there's some beautiful cars. Sundays, the Honor Flight Dinner and Hidden Spaces and Secret Places. That's all I got. Announcements of other upcoming meetings and events. Appointment by commission. We've got our bicentennial coming up in 2020. And Mark Ellinger has requested that we appoint him Chairman of the Bicentennial Committee. His father was chairman, I guess, 150th. And so he'd like to get started on some of that. And he wants to know if we want to appoint other people to serve on the committee or...
I think we should. I think it should be a fairly small committee. Three or five or whatever and Mark.
I'd say too, we need to get some people from our, you know, communities too to participate. Anyway, we still got time, but Mark said we need to probably get started on it, so.
I'm done fine with that. I think if Mark wants to head it, bring us kind of what he wants, how many he wants on it. Kind of see what direction he wants to go with it. Because it's going to come up quick.
Yeah, it really is. So.
I think we need to own them Henry rifles and do our own design. Don't let them design it.
That's fine.
Do something fancy.
And then the Historical Society, their 2019 ornament, because it does, it always comes out late in December. They're going to do the courthouse. And so even though it's 2019, they'll do a bicentennial ornament for us. We got that set up. And then we'll get some coins too, but we need to plan some events. Mark said his dad did an airshow. I don't think we want to do an airshow, but.
We'll see what he's got planned. I mean, we don't have a formal committee formed yet.
Nope.
So if he wants to kind of get us a plan or whatever.
Okay.
They got a coin made the last time.
Yeah, which I, and those are more collectible now than ever, so it's a nice thing that we can give out too.
Yeah, it'd be great to hear what kind of ideas he has and see what we want to do.
Okay.
And that'll have to be done next year, so if we're going to budget any money for it, we'll have to get it in the budget.
Yeah.
You'd think we'd be able to get enough sponsors to do that kind of stuff.
Yep.
Birthday cake.
Well, Mark and, yeah, we can, he can start talking to people too and see what we can get.
It's our birthday, we shouldn't have to pay for it. You pay for your birthday party? Never mind, Sam. You better move, we're going to lose it.
So you guys are okay with this?
Yes.
Okay.
I move that we appoint Mark Ellinger as the Chairman to Cole County Bicentennial Committee.
I'll second it. Do we have a committee yet or are we forming one now?
We're appointing the Chairman and we'll come back once.
Okay.
Okay.
You did a committee of one right now, he's going to everything he votes on is.
You second, right. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Bids and contracts, approval of the industry track agreement with Union Pacific Railroad.
Okay, I have those agreements. Jill and I have worked probably over the past two, three months figuring this out with U.P. And going back and forth with them on different items, but got it into a form that's agreeable, we believe. And it's ready for approval. Chris, you had a comment about maybe wanting to discuss ongoing maintenance costs and whatnot associated with the railroad as part of this. So I did put together the best I could on costs going back to 2005. We did find one file pre-2005, but it didn't have any agreements or much information in there that we were looking for. And there's another file supposedly that would have that agreement that we couldn't find, but we think it's in the building somewhere. But maintenance, typically with maintenance, Union Pacific, they'll randomly do an inspection of your track. And if there's deficiencies, they'll let you know. There's always the concern that they'll say, well, we're not going to go down the track because it has these issues. We've always been able to get our items repaired in a timely manner and never really had to worry about that being a problem, that they wouldn't come down the tracks, but you never know for sure when these costs are going to come up. So if you look at the maintenance over, you know, a 12, 13-year period of 67,000, you can say probably, you know, roughly, you know, if you average that out, 10,000 or, you know, five to 10,000 a year. But I think it's more, it's going to be more like on a five-year, six, seven-year basis rather than every year. And usually the repair work is mostly replacing ties. When you do that, you got to go back in and do some servicing of the track and gapping and all this other stuff associated with that, but it's mostly just tie replacement. Maintenance of materials, actually, those two combined are about 90,000 or so, give or take 80,000.
So obviously you got the hard cost for engineering that was actually completed for us, but what about staff time?
Staff time, minimal, probably.
Really?
Well, as far as engineering goes.
No, I'm talking about your time.
As far as on the maintenance end, we didn't spend a whole lot of time on it.
Yeah, but I mean, you've been dealing with U.P. for.
No.
Yeah, so.
Back and forth with that. I mean, yeah, I mean, it's, it's hard to.
It ain't minimal. I can tell you that.
Well, over a course of 10 years, yes. But recently dealing with this, this agreement and whatnot, yeah, I'd say there's a little, little more than normal time involved, so.
Well, and then, so that's an unknown, but, so what's the, what's the current length of track now before we do this extension?
Oh, gosh, I knew you were going to ask that. Do you have it? The total length is about 4,300.
That's total?
Yeah.
With the new, new extension?
Yeah, with the new extension.
And then there's about 1,000 feet in this new portion?
Yeah.
Existing line is 2,980 with the two sides that go in. It's 3,995, 3,995. And I think you said the extension was 1,100, 1,100 feet.
So 3,995 is.
Existing.
With, that includes the docking areas or the, I'm not sure what you call that.
What do you call it, Eric?
Sightings.
Sightings. And then another 1,100 and something is going to be what's going in? 11, what?
Just 1,100 is what. Plan web sighting is 685 and Outlaw is 330, so it's quite a bit, half the size in the end.
Obviously probably a different discussion, but what, what are we going to sign here today? This for Morris?
Yes and no. Morris is the reason why this spur is going in.
Right.
But the agreement is with us as being the owner of the track, with us and Union Pacific, which an agreement for both parties that they will go down the track and serve the industries that are there. And it lists out all the different legal things associated with that. So it doesn't specifically call out Morris just because, you know, we're the owner of the track.
Okay.
If, if there was another, there is some property that Outlaw owns. Let's say they were to sell that between them and Morris, then another industry could be served by the track. And I don't believe there would be another agreement that we would have to have. This would apply to that.
So this is, this is an agreement for all industries that the track is serving?
The new spur that we're adding.
The problem is they're trying to put a one-size-fits-all agreement. And this is, this is tailored for an industry and we are not an industry. We're the owner of the track. So they add these provisions in here that didn't even apply to us, but they didn't take them out. So it's kind of like take it or leave it. So that's when I contacted Hal Gibbs and he came up with the agreement we signed last week for Morris to indemnify Cole County for those inapplicable provisions. And this is not anywhere, I would not say this is an ideal agreement, but, you know, their attitude is if you don't sign it, we're not giving service.
Yeah.
And there was several items that Jill was able to get them to take out that really didn't apply to us.
Well, they also wanted us to go to binding arbitration. You want to avoid that like plague if you can.
So obviously if we sign this today, I mean, there's been some talk that they want to extend this rail spur even further for Morris. I've heard some rumblings about that. I mean, so obviously this is done, but.
The agreement, my understanding that we had with Morris was to build the track that specifically called out in this agreement here. Anything that they want to do beyond what we agreed to here, I think would be on them.
Okay, so that, like I said, it's just rumblings, like you said.
I don't know how serious they are on that.
So that'd be a different project for U.P.?
I think so, yes.
So once we sign this, are we ready to bid this project then?
It's, yes. Now, I don't, we may need to go back and just make sure everybody's on the same page because it's been a little time since this was all finalized. We have some easements to get with Outlaw and different items like that. So yes, as far as Union Pacific is concerned, we're okay to bid after this is signed. But we won't bid right away. We're going to have to go through the final steps. So it could be middle to end of the year.
Okay.
Yeah. Union Pacific is wonderful.
They've got a monopoly. They have a monopoly. That's the problem.
Questions? Good?
Not anything that pertains to this.
Tight-lipped, huh? Biding your time.
Don't say anything nice, don't say anything at all.
There you are.
Difficult to work with. We had a hold time with them on Mount Olive Road. They also own the old back. Where it crosses Mount Olive Road back here on Roosevelt. It took us months to get an agreement from them. We had the issue up on Old State and we finally just went ahead and built the road.
I mean, my concern is just, you know, we're at 4,000 feet. We're going to add another 1,100 feet. There may be other extensions that maybe even add more footage. And the more footage we got, the more expense we're going to have in repairs. And so I would like us to move to some type of a usage fee or there's something.
We discussed a little bit if the port, whatever becomes reality, you know, at least to be, I think our suggestion is that that all be combined together with port authority and railroad. Handle it that way, but you know, that's not here, it's not coming to fruition, so. We'd like to get out of railroad business. It's been here longer than I have, so.
Good.
Yep.
Yeah, I don't know if there's anything we can do to get out of the.
No.
Well, that'd be the only way, like I said, to reserve port authority, you know, develop for that. Conversation needs to be brought up then and finding them all together.
Yeah.
I think there's some other options too, so anyway. I move that we approve and sign the industry track agreement with Union Pacific Railroad.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. 2018-CP-12 motor grader purchase discussion through board.
I give you each one. You've got a copy of it up there. It's actually a M.O.D.O. contract. Misreplacing motor graders has got 13,000 hours on it. And we just brought it before you, so keep everybody informed about what we are buying or purchasing. It is off of a contract for the state of Missouri. It's got a few extra add-ons on it because of the fact that we use this machine with a shoulder machine on the front of it. So it needed an extra cooler and some controls to actually run that. Add to the actual bid price on it, so.
Is this on buyback or?
These are not, no, because I've asked the salesman of both of them. They're all talking about now that the ability to resell is greater now and what it was 15 years ago has completely changed and it's, they do this as well now just to buy them yourself and resell them yourself. If you have to put them out on go deals like we did some of the other ones, they're on Purple Wave. They bring just as good a money as they, if we would trade them or run them to a buyback, so.
Seems like if you added a few more options, it'd drive itself.
Well, yeah, there's a lot more that can be added, but.
Far from the roll down crank windows, huh?
Yeah, those are done. We just, we bring it before you guys to let you know what we're doing, so you see what we're, where we're headed with it, just the informational stuff.
What do we have in the budget for it?
290.
Even with the add-ons, we kept it under, so. That's a good thing.
They'll be back to spend the other 43.
Yeah, but you saved it for something else.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't know. I guess if the add-ons are worth what you're paying for them, then.
Well, they're, actually, they're just, they're basically the cooler and that stuff that's so we can actually run our shoulder machines we mount on the front of the grader. These run their edges on the black tile.
Oh, you know, that's not the one I was looking at.
Oh.
Standard warning?
That one and? They don't put mirrors on them things anymore for rear view?
Actually, Jeff, we have. There is a blind spot. We had one of our graders actually back into a car up on. Birdhead. The lady pulled in a little bit of a car right up against back. When you're sitting up there with that big back end, you can't see them, but they pull right up against you. She was in a hurry and like I said, walked her reverse back to.
Do we flatten it?
We've done a pretty good job.
Oh, I understand what you're saying, but then if you know you got that much stuff behind you, then you take extra care of looking, so. But like I said, if y'all felt it's worth the value, putting it on there, still on our budget.
The machine being out on the shoulders, doing the shoulders on our pay roads, Jeff. Yes, I think it's.
They're becoming an industry standard. I mean, just about even, even all your cars nowadays, you can't always buy one that doesn't have one of them on it.
Right, I'm going to keep buying those old antiques and driving them. I don't know how to drive with them mirrors on, they mess me up.
Any of those things that beeps when you got something behind you?
Yeah.
They have, probably has one of them, but. When you're that, when you're that close, you can't get it in reverse quick enough.
How long is the extended warranty?
Seven years.
Seven years from the date of purchase or seven years extended from the, after the one-year warranty or what's that?
Well, their one-year warranty is, doesn't cover as much as the extended does. The extended one covers the entire drive train on it, so.
Okay, what's the lifespan of these?
About seven years.
Okay.
We got 13,000 hours on them, we're looking at. There's 13 on one and 12 on one and 11 on another one and.
So that's powered, that's a drive train, powertrain, drive train?
Drive train. All of the emissions stuff, which is become a nightmare, as everybody knows, if you own diesel stuff. It's getting better, but.
I'm fine with it.
Good.
Yeah, I just want to go across the Coles Cliffs, not up there that much, so.
I can come more up to you on the team, is that a reach?
Oh, I'm sure Larry and Larry are handing that over to you. Hell, Eric probably would too, you're going to have to teach him a few things about engineering.
Oh, stay on him all the time.
Good thing about that, you'd never be wrong there if you're an engineer, so.
That's right.
Oh, you remind us. Yeah, no, I'm staying out in the middle of that one, you're on your own there, but.
I move that we approve the purchase of the motor grader on state contract.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Bid awards, 2018-27 interior painting.
Try to be Jennifer. Since you beat up on a cliff, they'd have to be nice. We have.
A little energy left.
You do? Oh, okay, sorry. We have three bidders and I know you guys see the bid tab. We did divide that project out, or Jennifer did, into project one, two, and three. And the total, if they wanted to give a total for all three of them. We had two bids that are extremely close for the whole project. If you divide it out separately, one contractor is low on the first two and then the other contractor was low on the third. You can see the days it's going to take to complete and the time they're able to start. So if you guys got any questions about those bids or anything.
What were we, where were we at on total?
I think we had just kind of a budget number of about 20,000 that we had in there for interior, so. Obviously came in a little bit higher. I mean, the, probably the most pressing area would be the public areas.
Yeah, one vendor is out of town. We did call around for their references too, so. Great deal.
I'd like to keep it local if we can.
The report I got was just fair.
Yeah.
The other two, I couldn't get anything out of them on their references.
Well, we're trying to keep the cost down on it, but it makes sense to do all of it before we got moved in there. And that's where I'm kind of at with it right now, seeing where we're at with everything else.
Is that mid-July, early August on extreme, would that?
That'll be just about right.
Okay, that's.
Trying to keep her happy.
I'm sure the 39 days, they'd work around other contractors that would be there.
Basically, we'll start alongside and work to the other side. At least that's the way I have it set up right now.
We can just kind of let it sit for a week and mull on it. I can bring budget numbers back to you, see where we're at, so.
Because we've got firm numbers on flooring now.
Right.
Driveway, we were kind of kicking around what we were going to do with it.
Right.
Have we gotten any more grants or heard of anything else?
We submitted our numbers to DHS split yesterday. But I don't know how long it's going to be, so I couldn't know if I could see it or not.
Was that going to be to help with what, anything?
Infrastructure stuff. This is what we submitted. Everything that we had bids for, so. But I don't know how much of it or any of it, I don't know what we get.
Oh, okay, so that's a, well, that's a big chunk that you're asking for. Through WIC, is that going to be? So you got two-thirds?
For the parking lot, we put two-thirds because they're really two-thirds of our clients. Interior, we figured WIC-only space is 22 percent, shared space is 28 percent. So that's what we asked for.
143,000?
You're averaging about 1,700 WIC, yeah, a month, so.
Because that would make a hell of a difference if we're not doing it. If we get the WIC grant, then I'd paint it all while we're doing it. But if we got limited funds, then we need to back off on it, so. So wait a week?
What's the timeframe on hearing back from that?
She thought we would hear it within 30 days, but it could be sooner.
Okay.
Yeah, let's just get it back on the agenda for a week and I'll try to get all this stuff plugged into my spreadsheet.
Well, that's going to make a big difference if.
Mm-hmm, sure. Yeah. There's some of that stuff that we could possibly wait on, you know, and just wait and see if we get the money too, so. Like, like the parking lot.
Parking lot.
Yeah.
But if we go ahead with the painting, then we can still get reimbursed for it.
Right.
And that just forget more for the parking lot, we can do it later.
Right.
So the signs, stuff like that, so. All right. Cool.
Okay.
Monument sign?
2018-28 signage health department.
We did receive two bids on that. Can check out your bid sheet there. The total without the permit is, the lowest is $8,075. That is for four signs.
8176.
Well, he had $101 in there for permitting. So we don't have to pay that. They'd bring it down to 8,075.
So we don't have to pay the permit application or?
That's what I hear.
It's a city permit, so I don't know.
All right, well, it's in there if we need it. What, so what do we got here? We got three, three signs and then a lit sign.
Yes.
Three signs, lit sign, and then your front door, I think was in on that.
No, the front, front door went on it. No, okay. No, the front, front door went on it. No, okay.
That's what I thought too, but did she just bid?
It was just a, just the signs. That was in specs.
One lit, two hard.
Lit on both sides.
So which one, try along the?
Well, this, this one's the one along the road. It's lit, and then there's all these.
So that's A?
Um, yeah, it's, it's, that's a ten, the lit sign.
Okay.
And then, those others are, one's, one's there at the entrance. And then there's, there's all kinds of signs over there.
I thought I've seen two of them over there. I don't remember seeing four of them.
And then the other three are basically out front, aren't they?
Yeah.
There are three along the front.
Along Truman Boulevard, yeah.
Oh.
So.
Two concrete, one's metal and plastic. That's the lit sign.
So if you wanna do the same thing, we can just kinda wait and see what we had in there for budget numbers and, and, uh, go from there, but.
Yeah, I'm fine with that. I was just looking at their difference in prices on.
Yeah.
On A was the, a big price difference, but on the other ones, they're pretty close to the same, so those is.
I think A must, A must be a little sign over by the entrance.
It is.
It's, uh, it's pretty small, so.
Yeah, but they got a big price difference, more than twice as much, so that was just.
Yeah.
Interesting, so. Okay, you just wanna hold off a week on that again, too?
If we can, yeah, and then we'll try to finalize all that.
Company's actually outstate. The other bid was actually from outstate.
Right.
Well, that's what I was.
Yeah, I'd rather keep, I'd rather stay local too, and it's, it is less, so.
They both had two years, um, laboring part.
Where, you gotta quit saying that.
Where are they, where are all the signs at? One by the front entrance, very entrance where you're pulling in, one's along Truman.
There's three along Truman.
Yeah, so it's, so the lighted sign is basically out, closer to Truman Boulevard, then there's.
The driveway or to the street turning on?
To Truman, no, it's just kinda out in front towards.
Kinda in the middle of the whole property?
Uh, it'd be close to Constitution there, um, and then there's kinda one up kinda in the woods, almost a little bit, where it's kinda angled from Constitution and Truman.
I think I've seen that one. I think you could probably eliminate it.
Yeah, and then there's another one as you're coming, uh, going east on Truman towards the far end, closer to the far end of the parking lot, so there's.
Okay, I'll drop by there and look at it, but I think we could.
Maybe cut out one.
Sure.
We're gonna thin out all the trees and everything anyways.
Well, we don't have that in the budget.
Well, then we'll put white lights on at Christmas, it'll be really festive.
But, but it needs to happen, so, anyway, but.
Make it real festive.
You always get the, uh, high lift out there, I can take care of it.
Yeah, if it's just that easy, we light a fire.
See, I just got done working with them on a grader and now here to know.
Yeah.
Should ask that before we got to your grader part.
Maybe we could try it with a grader.
You get big enough running it.
You got a warranty on it.
Okay, we're gonna, wait on this.
Is this yours, is this yours? Do you need that back?
You don't need it.
You, you could be the keeper of it.
I'll put it in my stack.
I'll take it, Debbie.
It wasn't attached to this, uh, bid sheet, so I didn't know what we were looking at. Let's see that out, let's.
Uh, the email with those bids.
Oh, so I gotta look up the email and attach it.
And get to V C sign.
Oh my gosh, I'd do good to find the minutes. Or, Jen, all right.
Okay, so we're gonna table that.
There is probably a lead time of, um, two to three weeks, he said, get the materials in, so.
He said two days on that?
He can get it done in two to three days.
Oh, well, that's kind of misleading. How can you get done in two days if you don't have the materials?
Well, you don't wanna order the material if you don't have the bid, you know.
But you can't get it done in two days if you don't have the materials in them. Takes a few weeks for the materials to technically.
It's still less than the other.
Okay, let's, uh.
It's still less than the other one.
So if you don't have it in two days, do we get liquidated damages?
No.
I hope he's not, listen, I'm gonna get a full call.
Okay, let's, let's be, unfinished business. We got any unfinished business? New business, accounts payable review.
I'd ask for, oh, wait a minute, just one, yeah. I'd ask for a couple of accounts payable, payable.
Just the one?
Just the one.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Public Works to discuss office renovation.
No. Sorry. I'm just kidding, Larry.
They gave a motor grader, I.
You know you can rent those things.
You can rent those things.
It's a.
What we've, uh, we've talked about for years, uh, this brings matter of security features in our front office there. Uh, right now, if someone comes in that's upset, they can make a run through the whole building. What we're wanting to do is, that building wall, where that countertop is now, and actually put in these security windows similar to what's, um, kind of like downstairs, what the accessory or collector has, as well as putting in a, a door with electronic lock on it. Um, we've had some, um, in the past, we don't have a whole lot of it with today's mentality. We'd just like to build for a little extra protection up there for the girls, uh, when people come in. So Larry's got some costs, uh, we wanna make sure it's all right with you before we proceed it with most of the work we'd be doing with our own staff.
Yeah, the, with, with the walls and the sheet rock and all that, and if we did one with the vinyl, like, I guess the health department or EMS or somebody has a bid out, uh, would be five thousand seventy-five dollars. And if we went with the carpet, off the bid they have is, be around forty-seven hundred. I guess our question is, are we paying for it or are you guys paying for it?
It's roughly ten thousand.
No, it's one or the other.
One or the other.
Yeah, it's, it's right around five grand.
Well, since you saved us that money on the, the grader, you should.
So you're talking about the wall and some glass and a door and the carpet, and that's all five thousand dollars?
Yeah, and we're doing the work ourselves. The only thing we'd have is someone coming in.
The flooring would be put in by whoever the bid is with. I think it's Scrubs or somebody.
Don't get any ideas, we don't wanna go in the business of carpentry, doing work elsewhere.
So is there gonna be a door with a keypad on it, or?
Be a keypad with electronic lock where the girls could unlock it, uh, from their desk and let people in. I guess it'd probably be more like the one up in the prosecutor's office where they have the two hundred bucks.
It's just a magnetic door that's, that's buttoned on.
Yeah.
I thought that.
Had the people get through the staff, whoever come in.
I thought the carpet was about three grand.
That's if we did every, I'm just doing the front part where the two girls are.
Okay.
If we did everything, it'd be, uh, where the other, the back section where the other two girls are, it'd be, uh, if we went with carpet there, it'd be about six thousand dollars. And vinyl was sixty-seven hundred.
Wouldn't vinyl be better for all the dirt?
That's what we're thinking of.
Even off, even off, so you have, it's an old Larry's office. Mine, the guys come and talk to you and, you know, it's been out snow or.
Greg, it's a mess, especially in winter time. It would be better just to do all vinyl up there.
That's, um, at some point, whether, if we're gonna stay in this office, we need to look at redoing the vinyl. It's been there since.
Building.
Yeah, eighty-four, eighty-six, and they look like it, so.
So it's forty-seven hundred, sixty-seven hundred, or five thousand seventy-five? I don't know if I'm hearing different numbers or what. If we just did where the two girls are with the vinyl, it's five thousand seventy-five dollars around. That's the entry and back where the reception area, I'm just calling it. That's just up front where the, where the, when you come in the front door where the first two girls are. Okay, that's what I'm calling reception area, I guess, then, so. Walk-in and a reception area. If we put the flooring on the other side of, of those girls where the other two off spaces are, it'd be about sixty-seven hundred. Sixty-seven hundred more? No, that would be the total for that. There'd be another seventeen hundred more. Seventeen or twenty-seven? Seventeen, I don't know. Seventeen. I had forty-seven hundred in there somewhere. Oh, that was the carpet. That's the carpet. Okay. So I'm trying to decipher it, write this down at the same time.
I'm okay with it, just, I mean, we, we've had some issues, so I think just for safety.
Okay with it, what, come out of general revenue or of?
Well, they could take it out of their funds, I'd rather, but one way or another, it needs, I think it needs to be done.
And you could take that out of your capital too, if you want, instead of general fund.
We can actually lock some of you out if they don't wanna let you in, right?
Exactly.
Yeah.
But you're gonna have to give my keys first, so.
How have we historically done part of the stuff out there, Debbie?
Historically, we've paid for everything.
Cause y'all have your own tax, so is that kinda the reason?
Well, no.
No, they don't usually use their sales tax for that kind. It was coming out of their operating funds.
But they do have their own.
They do, but. Operating tax, the road and bridge tax, which we're just referring to.
But we do.
Should be used for road and bridge.
We do do most of the other buildings.
You said you do.
Do do.
I don't know why I can't.
You gotta stop that. Both of you.
I know fifteen, fifteen percent of that does go towards capital projects, so do we use some of that towards it, or do we have them use it on other? I mean, we're sitting here giving a million and a half to hell, but we surely can give. I think y'all enjoy that more than I do though.
But it didn't work, can I get my money back?
I mean, it's still our building, and so I don't, I don't mind if it comes out of our capital improvements.
It's kinda where I was at.
So, okay, let's just do it out of, out of ours and then.
That's two things that we've got.
As long as you don't come up and ask it for a cliff or truck.
So.
When Cliff comes up and asks it for a truck, though.
So what are we, are we doing the sixty-seven hundred or just so that we're all on the same page?
I'm fine with doing it all, since they're actually building the walls themselves and doing the work. I think they're actually saving us some money.
So that's, that'll be about where we're at.
Do it all at one time, or you, I think the, the vinyl planks are probably gonna, you're gonna be happier with cleaning and stuff, but it's also gonna be colder on their feet and stuff and I guess you can put a rug underneath of them if they're.
That's what they're wanting. They're wanting.
Girls are wanting the vinyl, so. All right, well, they can get a throw rug if they're, if it's cold, I mean.
Another pair of socks or something.
It is colder on your feet and stuff. We don't want space heaters.
No, we don't want space.
Eric? Your office just got smaller. We're moving somebody in with you. Yeah.
All right, I'm with you.
Well, turn around so the heat's blowing into their office.
Okay, better move on.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Supplemental agreement for Meadowbrook.
Number three, Meadowbrook Estates Stormwater Improvements Project.
Um, this supplemental agreement was, is for construction phase services. Uh, typically with, um, our engineering agreements, we have a lot of money left over in the end, in which we can do some construction phase work and not have to do another agreement. On this project, we had added several things throughout the course of the project, uh, and ended up with two supplementals, and so to do the construction phase work, uh, we need to do a third supplemental agreement. Um, they've actually already done some of this work, shop drawing, review, uh, answering questions, and then anticipated additional questions and items in which they may have to go out into the field to look at a few things. Uh, this stormwater project's different than most in that we have two pretty good sized box culverts, uh, that usually get into more, uh, technical, structural type items, so. Um, I asked Bartlett and West to, to give us an estimate on some time. We kinda talked about it and, and agreed to that thirty-six hundred would be an appropriate amount. Should cover us, uh, to, to get through, uh, the end of the project, so. Uh, with that said, uh, we have the supplemental agreement with Bartlett and West for thirty-six hundred dollars, um, and I would recommend approval of this. Questions?
Um, so what have we encountered that we've had three different supplemental agreements here? One was pretty big.
It's, um, things that we added to the project.
Yeah, like?
Um, we added, um, additional work on Courtyard Drive to do all the survey and, um, concrete repair sections. That was kind of a, an unknown at the time when we set the original contract. Uh, we added some stormwater work and some curb work along Idlewood to tie everything in.
Okay.
Kinda thought, thinking about it as we were doing it, but let's, let's wait and see how things progress, and then we also added some, some, um, reprofiling of Cheryl Drive.
Okay.
Um, to, to fix some variations in the curb. Uh, felt like it'd be best to have them go ahead and design that rather than try to do that in the field because it was such, it was so drastic in how much it changed, so, um, with all those different things added, a lot of it required going out and doing more survey work and whatnot, so, um.
Is that something they should have caught in the original design maybe?
Pardon?
Is that something they should have caught in the original design possibly?
Um, nah, not necessarily. Um, when we do, historically, how we've done these stormwater projects, um, typically, we just focus on doing the stormwater drainage design, and a lot of times on the curb, as we're replacing all the curb in the subdivision, we'll do that kinda in-house, just kinda stake that, put it back where it is. Um, with that, um, the stuff on Cheryl that we redid, reprofiled, that was something that we just kinda came about after the fact.
Okay, well, I was wondering, when you give them the scope of work and say, this is what we're wanting to do, wanting to fix stuff out here, I mean, do they have direction that if they see something that we could and should fix while we're in there doing it, bring it up from the get-go instead of doing the supplemental, so?
Yeah.
It sounds like we're adding it.
Yeah, a lot of it comes in, once they get that initial survey data in, where they start laying stuff out, they can see that there's gonna be issues with drainage. Um, curb lines are made, you, ropes might need to be profiled, you know, we might be able to do away with water or add uh, stormwater inlets and stuff, so it, it's.
That's fine, I, yeah, I think Eric kinda answered it when you said where stuff we.
The difference on.
Found or added.
The, the thing with this one, and then we also had a few supplementals on crossroads as well, the projects are so big that as you get into them, you see things that you didn't actually see just driving through and just kinda walking in initially. You know, you get into a lot of odds and ends that come about during design on, when they're that big.
I just, I see on supplemental agreement number three, it says supplemental agreement number one, number two, and number two, so I don't know.
Yeah, that's, I corrected that on the, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
So as we're, um, as we're doing this project, so we're tying all the stormwater pipe into this new pipe, I mean, all the way from Idlewood down into all these, okay?
Yep, the whole subdivision, everything gets revamped, redone.
Getting new pipe, okay.
We added a lot of inlets too, because that originally was designed just to drain downhill.
Right.
Um, so this way it's taking it underground, and we're, we're able to, to slow it down in some cases, you know, just to keep the people down the bottom hill. to keep the people down bottom hills, ones that are getting flooded.
Okay.
Yeah, so, and then I, back up on Jeff's comment, there we, there is something we had them redesign on Meadowview Drive, um, had them move the curb in, something that came about through the, kind of the tail end of the project dealing with utilities, so that took a little effort there, too. That was, that would have been part of supplemental number two.
So we think this will be the last supplemental agreement?
Yeah, because it's construction phase services.
Yeah, they're, yeah.
And I really don't think we'll use up this whole amount, but just to be on the safe side, because I don't want to come back and do another one if we run into some things, so. You know, I think we'll, we'll save a little bit in the end, but I don't like bringing supplementals to you, but sometimes they're just, it's part of the process.
But I'm glad we're being proactive though on stormwater, because that's, it's not gonna go away, we've had way too many.
You know, we all know places in the county where there's issues, you know, the school out there, you know, just the amount paving and rooftops, it's gonna be there, you know, it's, I know the C M P S and the, the little district taking that into consideration there, too, so.
I hear what you're saying, Sam, but people need to understand, too, that, yeah, we got a few issues, but when we get three inches of rain in an hour.
I know.
Well, there ain't a system out there that can handle it, so.
Exactly.
All right, that's what, business fifty and all.
So.
If we get, uh, these torrential rains that come in, you know, thirty, uh, thirty minutes to sixty minutes, you know, there's just no way it's gonna go over, you know, so.
This project does say stormwater improvements, but it's also street as well, we're redoing all the streets, they were in really bad condition out there. We're fixing those as well as we're doing all the stormwater work, so it's, it's a full rebuild of the subdivision.
So it seemed like Stockman was kind of moving fairly slow here, I haven't seen a whole lot of pay estimates, I mean, are they just kind of gearing up, or?
Um, they've been doing, there's a water line relocation, um, and part of our stormwater work, we had a water line adjacent to it, and we included in, um, because it benefited us by getting out of the road to do the trenching for that.
Mm-hmm.
So they focused on that, they started actually this week, um, with the first box, and we went on a pill, so.
Okay.
They've been mainly doing water line work.
And then how's Crossroads coming, too?
Good, yeah, they're moving, they're doing really good.
They got all the storm sewer in, or storm?
Most of it, I mean, it's.
On the one side, they're just now getting into the other side.
Yeah, they're, um, oh, they're easily over halfway with all the stormwater work, so.
And they started new curving or anything out there?
Not yet, they're doing all the stormwater, getting that in place, and then they'll start on the streets.
They'll come back and do the curbs, like you ran, curb machine, way out of all of that.
Okay. Good enough, I move with it, we approve supplemental agreement number three for Meadowbrook Estates Stormwater Improvement Project.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Probably pretty stickers.
Anything else before we do a closed session?
I do have one thing real quick, um, it'll come to you probably next week, uh, we're gonna, um, bring Tom Kleagle back, who retired last year to do some, help us out this summer, we're overloaded, uh, help us out inspect the South Liberty Road box culvert, and, uh, we'll have a, an independent contractor agreement that I'll get to you, hopefully we'll have it to you next week, put it on the agenda next week, so, just wanted to let you know that'll be coming.
Tell him he's gonna need a few more, uh, references.
Yeah. Background checks and everything, huh?
Yeah, I want to know what he's been doing the last six months or a year.
Enjoying life.
Yeah, he's been at West L A all, ever since, huh?
Yeah. Yeah. What is that, something Acres?
It's Loopy's Acres.
Loopy's Acres, that's what it's. Yeah, I appreciate the invite, oh, wait, I didn't get one from him.
For what?
To go to Loopy's Acres with him.
Larry drove, I just rode along.
I'm kind of sensitive, you know, I got feelings and stuff, kind of hurts.
Wouldn't schedule another trip.
I'll be sure to let him know.
Been on Tom long enough, it's not gonna bother him.
He's got a nice place up there.
He'll bring me a list of reasons why I wasn't invited. All right, is that it?
You got anything else?
No, I was just giving him crap. All right, what we got, closed session?
Mm-hmm.
Were you looking to see if you had something else?
Yeah, I was kind of, thought I saw something through, coming through an email or something that we should talk about.
Do y'all have a list of projects we're working on each month or something that y'all, for road and bridge? Because actually I ran into a couple of Lock and Den people, and they were curious what we were at on that project. And I said, mm, I haven't emailed y'all to bug y'all about that yet.
Let's double check.
Did you give that to Christie? Did you give that to Christie?
Oh, yeah, I just got it.
Before you can, what, do the whole thing?
Yeah.
Okay, so you are down to just one, and we're not gonna do it until we have them all. But that's coming just from, up from Wayne's, right?
Yeah, the guy who had the, I think the garden out by the road, Spencer, so, I don't remember what he made.
That would be up right toward there, up right toward that, end of it, not the end of it, but the beginning of it, there.
Okay, so they maybe need to influence him to sign it, or what?
Well, I think Spencer has talked to one of the other, we're just gonna talk to him.
Okay, so, and that's just gonna be clearing out a few trees, getting rid of some of the big ones along there and widening it?
What we did down on Landing Creek, uh, where we widened it out.
Landing and Castle Rock, both, yeah, those are real nice.
Yeah, Castle Rock's, uh.
So, okay. I knew that's kind of where we were at a while back, but I didn't know how far, or if anything had changed since then, and ran into a couple of them, and so, saved an email for y'all.
Okay.
So, that MAC legislation report that we received the other day?
Yeah, we need to get ahold of Kehoe.
Uh, like we need to all call him, um, in regards to the, uh, jail per diem, so.
The way it sounds is that the House is on our side with it, they don't know where that privilege came in to, um, put the nonviolent felon provision in there. But right now it seems like the Senate's gonna be a problem, so we may want to get ahold of Senator Kehoe and.
So I guess if they, they pass it, we'll just dump them out in the Capitol over there?
Yeah, we can put some pink handcuffs on them and put them on the front steps of the Capitol. By the way, if they're nonviolent, then it won't have handcuffs, right?
Sure, that's right, so.
They'll give you twelve fifty a day for in-house arrest or something.
Well, we just monitor them and then stick them over there, sleep in the hallways, wherever you want, it's a public building, right?
Yeah, I'm not sure where that came from, they haven't said where the nonviolent felon provision, who added that?
Makes you wonder, uh, who's thinking over there?
I don't know if we want to do a phone call or email or something to Senator Kehoe separate, or?
I think we'll send letters to all of them and call them, too.
I just called Carol.
Anyway, probably can't get ahold of Kehoe, see if I can talk to Adam.
I got Mike's stuff.
Do you? I feel answered. Okay, that's all I had.
All right.
Good? I move we go into closed session, present section six, ten, point oh-two-one of the revised statutes of Missouri for personnel issues, sub-three.
Second.
Go call? Yes.
Yes. Yeah. Hey, Larry, Eric, if you just got a second, sir, you've talked to C M P S, let me.
Are we up?
Yes, we should be up.
Okay, we're open, uh, bids, proposals for Renslake, number two zero one eight dash twenty-four. And this is being submitted by the Renslake homeowners, Mike Keller is the contact person. And they have a proposal here that will be taken under advisement. It looks like we've got signatures from, did you say eleven? Eleven of the, eleven of the, uh, landowners, so, okay.